All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. For the record, I'm going to introduce those that are in attendance for tonight's meeting. My name is Mark Marzulla, I'm the chairman of the board. Other board members are Joe Rosido, Chuck Abbey, Don Snyder, Don Blas, and Mike Morozio as the ad hoc. Cindy Chamberlain is our planning board clerk. Steve Prokopio is the director of code enforcement. Mark Parrish is the town engineer. Neil Germain is the town attorney. We have Nanty White, who is our liaison from the town board. And Judy Boyke, town board member, is also present. We do have applicants that are present, we'll introduce those folks as we get to that agenda item. And with that, I would ask Mr. Snyder to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mark, if you could post the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation, indivis- liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get started, I just wanted to apologize for our attempt last week at this meeting. We obviously had a technical difficulty and had no audio on the Facebook stream. So, we are going to give it another run tonight, and I'm pretty confident that that has all been worked out. As is typically the case, the planning board will accept comment on any active application currently before the planning board. Due to the fact that this meeting is being conducted virtually, anyone wishing to comment on any active application should make those comments to the planning board in writing. Written comments should be communicated to the planning board by email, fax, or postal service. The information for the fax, email, and address will be available on our town website. And I will also post it on Facebook when we get done with this meeting. Now, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Everybody had the chance to review the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Chuck Abbey, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Don Blas. We'll call the roll, Mr. Rosido. Joey Rosido, how do you vote for the approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder? Mr. Snyder, how do you vote for them?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Blas?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is for site plan. And we're going to set up public hearing, this is for Cindy Stone for the property at 9360 Bartow Road. It's for a proposed grooming shop and kennel. Tim, lawyer with IANUZI and Romans is here to represent the applicant. Tim, if you can give us kind of a rundown of what you're going to be proposing there and any changes that you had submitted recently?
Uh, yeah, so, the changes to the site plan is we went out and did an actual updated survey of the entire property showing all the existing, uh, conditions out there at her property. The property is located on Bartow Road, it's agricultural district. Specifically, the changes that we've gone through on the actual site plan is we show that we're widening the existing driveway to the required 22-foot width. We're showing four spaces out in front of the existing metal building and two spaces just north of the existing metal building for a total of six spaces. The previous site plan only had, I believe, four totals, so we added two spaces to the site plan. Those are the physical changes that we've changed to the site plan. We did include a new building interior layout to show where all how the kennels and everything because the previous one was done and didn't quite match the existing building. So, we revised that to show how that was going to go. She does live at the site. She, her and she's going to have one employee, they're going to work the site. And again, it's dog grooming and boarding. We have been in the front of the board twice previously. I think tonight, we're just looking to get some feedback, comments, and any questions, concerns regarding the use of the dog kennel. And hopefully move this thing forward.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I'll go to the board to see if there's any questions, Mr. Rosido.
Yes, I asked last week, but this new meeting. The question was, is there more than one business on the property, or is there going to be more than one?
And I think Cindy Stone is here to kind of answer that. Is Cindy available?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, the, what I'm proposing is having a dog grooming and boarding under one name. So, it'd be one business. I currently run my nonprofit rescue at the same location and have since I moved there in 2013.
Okay, so it's going to be considered one business, but you're doing several different things there?
Yes.
Thank you.
All set, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Abbey.
I'm all set at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Chuck. Don Snyder?
Yes, I have a few concerns. I spoke, started to speak to him when we had our non-meeting meeting. Looking at the comments that the public has so far presented, I'm not sure today's the day to talk about them, but I'm really concerned about a number of them here that I could read off if you want to that talk about, it's not true, it's not what we're about. And I just want to kind of clear things up because there were a number of things that were said in these emails that is not what's being considered as a part of this project. So, I guess I'm questioning, do I have permission to raise my concerns from the public comments?
Absolutely.
All right, the first one is a comment that was made about a safety issue. They can see a cyclist driving down Bartow. A dog runs out, hits, scares a cyclist, the cyclist swerves, and he goes into the road. With that, I would like to ask the applicant, can she assure us that, other than the, a dog under the owner's control, how can she control the dogs, or how is she going to control the dogs in her care?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that for you. Right now, I own a grooming shop and run it on Route 11, which is a pretty busy street. It's four lanes of traffic. What I've done for the past 12 years is had a three-barrier procedure. There's a door, then there's a gate, and then there's a door for my dog. So, in the new kennels that I'm proposing to put there, the client will walk into the lobby, which is the front door. At the end of that lobby, I have a counter with a gate. The, I will check the client and take the dog behind the gate. From there, the dog will be then brought through another door into my kennel area and then into their kennel. So, the kennel will, that dog would have to get through three barriers before it would get out of our kennel. And the kennel runs that I have nine kennel runs that run in and out. The outside runs have a guillotine door, that's a metal door that's pretty heavy that the dogs can't open. I open that. From there, there are, my kennel runs are being built in a lean-to that's already existing. So, the kennel runs will be vinyl fencing, they're from the ground up, and they have jumper barriers on them. So, the dogs can't jump out of the kennels. From there, there's a gate on the back of that kennel. And then, if they got out of there, it would, they would have to get out of the lean-to itself, which is walls. So, there's my three barrier there. So, that's how I would prevent the dogs from getting out.
Thank you, that helps. The other comments, I've got a couple other for you, Cindy, but also, there were a number of people that talked about a zone change. This application has nothing to do with a zone change, the zone is agricultural. You know, a comment was made about spot zoning, we're not rezoning it. So, the only other one, Cindy, that I had concerns about was a comment that was made by one of the concerned citizens about what you do with your feces, how it's stored, how it's picked up. Can you reassure me on that issue as you did with the dog escape control system?
Sure, we pick up waste from the dogs every day, and we put that into a container. And our trash pickup is Monday morning, so we would be taking that out to the road and putting it out there for pickup from our local pickup.
All right, now, I think that might be a small problem because I believe if this is going to be called a commercial business, that it may not be able to be picked up by our trash hauler. So, that probably is something that between now and the next time we meet, you might want to have checked out. I would take it, from what you said, the feces ends up in some kind of a container that has a top on it?
Yes.
Okay, and is that, and right now, that's the way it goes to the curb, or right now, does it go to the curb in a different manner?
Right now, what happens is, for the past seven years, I take it down and put it on the side. It has not been in a container. I've had no issues with that, I've had no complaints about that. But I will certainly take the dog feces and put them in a container and put them down at the road if that's what we need to do, absolutely.
Thank you. Steve Prokopio, I've got one question for you as regarding to this applicant. Have you had any complaints since 2013 relative to this address?
I have not.
Okay, you've answered my questions, thank you.
Can I adjust one thing, please?
Mark, can? Who's speaking?
This is Tim, this is Tim.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. In, specifically in regards to the waste being taken by the weekly waste removal. Just, just so everyone is aware, we just, like a year ago, did a very similar project, barks and rec at Topman in Taft Road. Commercial kennel boarding place just like this. And on that, during that site plan, this question was brought up. And we were put, we put a note on the plan, specifically saying the dog waste to be included in weekly trash pickup. We did the exact same thing with this site plan, and that was one of my questions when I initially talked to Cindy. And my understanding was basically, we addressed it that way with that previous site plan. I figured it was the same situation here, so I thought it'd be fine to do the same thing with this site plan.
Okay, my only concern is, okay, the change that I think I would request, though, is if that still is the way this project goes, if it gets approved, I would like to have the dog feces be in a covered can if it's going to be at the road until pickup.
Let me just piggyback on that, on that subject. My name is Mark, I'm the chairman. So, I looked at the town website, and it says that the trash pickup is for normal household use. So, I'm guessing, and Tim, you certainly can look into this, but I'm guessing this would not be considered normal household use. So, it may end up being a commercial use. So, I would like some answers on that when we get together next time. And I would also like for you to consider, the applicant, to consider having the pickup at the facility, not out at the road. So, if you can address those two items for me at the next meeting, that would be appreciated. Mr. Snyder, anything else?
No, I'm fine, she's answered my questions, and so did Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blas.
Yeah, yes, I have a question for Cindy. There's a couple, three parts here if I can ask, and is it a, go ahead?
Go ahead.
Cindy, it's my understanding that to be running, it looks like three businesses, two commercial businesses plus your rescue business. Does it require three different licenses in the state of New York? And by putting them under one umbrella of a rescue, will that make all three businesses tax exempt? Is that correct?
I'm not looking to put the rescue under my business. That's a nonprofit entity itself. So, that's not, I'm not looking to put that, I'm just looking to keep that the way I had it. Pampered paws grooming is going to be pampered paws grooming and boarding. So, that's one business doing two separate things, dealing with the dogs. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I see, you're going to have two businesses, and then, but they will in no way have any connection to the rescue business?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, is it, is it fair to ask you, is the rescue business tax exempt?
It is tax exempt, yes.
Okay. Well, that, that's a concern of mine, those three questions. I do have another question, and it's going to be about the agricultural zoning. And maybe Mr. Prokopio should address this one. And, you know, I'm not a zoning officer, Steve, but I read through quite a bit of it. And what it says in here, that the grooming business does not come into play under agricultural zone. That is, that's considered outside of the scope of agricultural. Is that true, Steve?
Well, I don't think you will find grooming specifically listed as a use in the zoning ordinance. If you look at the allowed uses, site plan uses, under the ag district, it, you'll see that number 17 says other uses, which in the opinion of the planning board are similar in character to those listed above. Okay, one of the things that are listed there is a veterinary hospital, veterinary clinic, okay? And agricultural related sales and services businesses. So, in an ag district, as a right, without site plan approval, you can have a kennel, okay, as a right. So, these, these are similar uses, you know, in character. And I believe is it a previous planning board meeting, that the planning board had determined that they, they could, you know, review this as a site plan application, this use?
This is Neil Germain, I'll go a step further if you want me to elaborate on that. It was actually, the planning board made a finding that this was an acceptable use under 17. That, that use is in fact a permitted use at this point.
Definitely, the grooming business is, is considered under the zone agricultural. Agricultural covers that part of the business, you're saying?
I'm saying with a finding under 17, yes, for proposed use is an acceptable use. So, you have some latitude under section 17 to say, it is similar to the other uses. And with the finding of the planning board, which has already been made, that use has been covered. That, that use is, is in fact, right now, a acceptable use of the property.
Okay. I think I'm all set, Mark.
Thank you, Don, thank you, Neil. I've got a couple of questions. Tim, sorry if I missed it, but the sign that was out front has been removed, is that correct?
That, that is correct, we do not have the sign out, out front because it was deemed per the zoning, we're not allowed to have the sign, so we did remove that.
Thank you. And where are you with the county department of transportation?
We, as I sent an email earlier today, we are all set with the county DOT as far as putting the, expanding the driveway where it was. And they are no longer going to require the traffic study. Basically, what I had to do is I had to answer a list of questions from the DOT as far as what exactly was going on at the, at the site. And that addressed their concerns as far as needing a, a traffic study. So, we should be all set with DOT.
Thank you. And I wanted to confirm that this is not a doggy daycare. Dogs are not going to be dropped off in the morning and picked up in the evening.
That is correct.
One issue that has been brought up already by the public, and I can certainly understand it, is the barking from the dogs. I know that a couple of our board members had done a site visit. In fact, Mr. Snyder hasn't been able to describe his visit, I don't think, yet during the meeting, and I wasn't going to do that. But before I get into that, you know, I reviewed the code for the town when it, with regard to dog barking. And it stipulates that habitual annoyance to any person for continuation of 10 minutes or intermittent for 30 minutes is a violation. And under the third, first three offenses, there's a fine, and that fine escalates during each offense. And then, on the fourth offense, the animals can be actually removed. I had an opportunity to talk to Stephen, I didn't catch his last name, we had the kind of a bad phone connection. He's with the CNY SPCA, and he's in charge of the dog control for our town. And he told me he stands ready to enforce any violation. He actually complimented the town officer for that fourth violation and the ability to move an animal if the four violations occur. So, I want to make sure that the applicant is aware of that code. And we did not do a site visit with the dogs outside. I want to know what will be done to ensure that we're not going to get that kind of a complaint. And that if that complaint does come in, that you understand the potential violations that are in order. So, you can answer those tonight, you can put a letter together for us later, whatever you would prefer.
Well, I, this is Cindy, I think I can answer that for you tonight. I'm well aware of that stipulation in, in the town code. I adhere to it. We, we are going to schedule our dogs to be let out three times. So, we're going to stick within the town code on doing that. We have two different groups of dogs that are going to go out, two different, so not everyone's out at the same time. We're going to let the first group out for five minutes, of course, I'm going to be there. I'm, they're not going to be let out and just left there, I'm going to be there. Then we let them back in, and then we let the second dogs out. We'll do that three times during the day to let them have ample time outside to relieve themselves, and then they'll come back in. We also have, I talked about this earlier, we have vinyl fencing in the runs. Because, one, we don't want a dog to get a paw stuck underneath and have another dog get hurt. That's also to control the barking. If they don't see each other, they tend not to bark as much. So, I'm well aware of the code, and I have a plan in place to keep the barking down to a minimum and stay within, within that code.
Thank you, if, if we can get that stipulated in writing, that would be terrific. Would you explain, you understand the code, you tend to abide by it?
Sure.
Board members, any additional questions?
None for Snyder.
I'm good.
All right, everybody's good. Mr. Morozio, have you got any questions?
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Parrish?
I guess I do have one question. Much of the public has brought up the issue of, of, you know, additional traffic, you know, being generated from the project. So, I guess I'd ask the applicant to explain how many trips per day, the timing of that, that type of thing, that might be, occur from the project.
Good point.
Sure, I can do that. My grooming shop is by appointment, and it's open 7:30 to 3 o'clock. I do six to eight dogs a day, Monday through Friday, with my grooming. Some clients, actually, a lot of clients have two dogs. So, the most that would be coming from the grooming clients would be six to eight cars a day. And that's Monday through Friday. The kennel is open Sunday through Sunday. It's open in the morning and for two hours, and then in the afternoon. I have 25 runs, but six of those runs are for my rescue dogs, so I have 19 runs. I don't see them being full at all the time, but I do see them being full during, you know, holidays and stuff like that. So, if they're all full, and people drop off their dogs Thursday, Friday typically, sometimes on Saturday. They pick up Saturday, Sunday, Monday. So, I'm, I'm looking at maybe three or four more cars a day coming to the place to drop off for, for boarding. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So, if you had eight appointments for grooming a day, it's really 16 trips. You've got, they, they, I assume they, most of the people don't wait while you're grooming, they probably drop them off and then come back later?
They do, they drop off and then come back.
Okay.
And then, you've got to remember, too, that on Saturday, Sunday, I don't have grooming. So, that's going to cut down a little bit there, too.
Okay, that answers, I think that answers the question.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Neil, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a quick comment for Tim, this is Neil Germain. Tim, when you actually get your answer about how you're going to handle the feces, that should probably be in the notes so we can see it as the part of the approval, or so we can see it and maybe later enforce it more readily.
Yes, I'm going to put on the plan specifically that any and all feces are to be put in a covered container out at the, when it's out at the road, it's got to be in some type of enclosed container. I'll shoot you some language quick, just so you see it.
Before we decide to handle it, you know, it's not really my call, but I would just, it's got to be on the plan so we can enforce it later.
All set, Neil?
Yes, all set, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Prokopio, anything?
No, I'm all set, it seems like we've covered, covered a lot of the concerns.
Thank you, Steve. All right, before I open the public hearing, I just kind of want to go through a few things. We received a lot of comment already, and so I just want some clarification so that the people can understand what's, what's transpired so far. As Mr. Snyder said, this is a site plan review, this is not a zone change. Existing zoning that's in place is agricultural, and that's going to stay in place. The proposed use, as you've heard, is an allowable use within that district. Public hearing is not required for site plan. Let me repeat that, a public hearing that we're going to be doing is not required. More often than not, by a lot, we do not do a public hearing for site plan. However, the planning board has decided to seek public input for this project. So, we'll go in above and beyond what is required. The public hearing is not a dialogue between the planning board and the public. It's not a question and answer session. Rather, it provides the public the opportunity to share information they would like the planning board to consider during the review. So, although we're doing this remotely, and you're not going to get, have the opportunity to speak to us on live time, it does not affect the actual activities of a public hearing. With that, Neil, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that was well said.
With that, we're going to open the public hearing. Comments are going to be due to the town by the 29th of this month. You can submit those by email, fax, or postal service. And again, you can find that information on the town website. And I will be posting that on the live stream comment section when we get done this evening. So, that will conclude item number one on the agenda. Second item is for a subdivision preliminary and final plan for the Melphie property at 6 Broadhead Drive. There's two lots, and there is a public hearing for this one that's going to be scheduled as well. The applicant, Maggie, are you here? Or who's representing the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Maggie. Would you like to go over with the board what you're proposing, looking to do?
Yeah, we're just trying to, to subdivide one lot and then change the zoning for that lot from commercial to residential.
And with that, I'll ask for questions from the board, Mr. Rosido?
I have none.
Mr. Abbey?
I'm all set for now, also.
I'm all set for now, also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
I have no, no comment, no concern.
Mr. Bloss?
No questions at this time.
I only have one item. And Neil, we talked about this last time. It's relative to the private driveway and the concern that the fire department had relative to maintenance of that. I did talk with the highway department from the town of Cicero, and they confirmed that they do not maintain that, that it is private. So I think we're going to want to stipulate that in the motion, correct?
That, that's correct. You can stipulate it in the motion, but by, right now, by discussing it, I think what you're doing is you are putting the applicant on notice that there's, I guess it's a private bridge that services the private road and has been noted by the fire department to be deficient as far as its ability to accommodate fire equipment. And the applicant is on notice that that has come up, and on notice of that fact.
There was actually some question as to whether or not it was private property or if there was an easement that ran through there. I don't know if that's something we need to be concerned with during this process.
I, I don't know the answer to that at this point, if it's private property or if it's an easement.
Do we need to concern ourselves with it?
No, right now, we're just doing subdivision. If they get to site plan, they're going to have to answer those questions.
And then the county planning board had no significant adverse implications. They did have a couple of comments, and I'm not, I'm looking for input on this as well. They say that we should require a conceptual plan of the proposed residence, make sure it's viable design to meet zoning and flood ordinance as part of the subdivision review. Now, it seems like that would be done by Steve's office, but the county is saying we should do it. Neil?
Who, us? We would do that, we would, we would normally do that as part of, as part of a subdivision application.
Um. Mr. Parrish? It's beyond our scope, okay. That's what I thought. Mr. Marizio, have you got anything?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I have provided some comments on the plan to the applicant surveyor. And as of, as of today, I have not received anything back. I think you're going to be opening the public hearing today and keeping this until the next meeting, I assume. So I just would advise the applicant to perhaps contact the surveyor and make sure that we get a revised plan back. I'd like to get it at least a week prior to the meeting so we can review it and provide a review letter to the, to the board when they consider approval for the project.
Thank you, Mark.
This is Maggie Legnetto. Can you tell me what needs to be revised?
I will email you a draft of the letter that's got the things in there. I don't, it, it's relatively minor information. So I can, I can email it to you so you know what's been provided to your surveyor to address.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jermaine, anything?
No.
So at this point, I will open the public hearing. Again, the comments need to be submitted to the town by the 29th of this month. And you can either email, fax, or postal service. That was common to the town. And again, that information is available on the town website and will be posted on the Facebook screening page as well. And that moves us on to the third item on the agenda. We should do a zone change recommendation, Neil?
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they're looking for.
Sliding did.
For zoning, for zoning change. Are there any questions from the board, Mr. Rosito?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Abbey?
All set as well.
Mr. Snyder? Don Snyder? Donal?
We'll see him.
No. Interesting.
Michael?
Mr. Bloss, any comments?
No, I'm all set. I, I just had a quick conversation, though, with Don Snyder. He said his computer froze up.
Okay. We'll carry on. That means Mr. Marizio will be acting as a member now, Neil?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Marizio, any, any comments on the zone change recommendation to the town board?
No, no questions.
Mark, anything on this item? Or Parrish?
No, nothing.
Neil Jermaine, any comments on this?
No.
Mr. Procopio?
No, thank you.
Neil, do we need a seeker?
No, it's just a recommendation so we can do the, would you like me to prepare the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, you're going to move for the adaptive resolution recommending the zone change application known as Anthony Melphi, 6 Broadhead Drive, general commercial to R10.
That's in the form of a motion. We have a second?
I'll second motion.
That was Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll call the role, Mr. Rosito?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Marizio?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is for Barone Garden Properties at the property at 6200 and 6214 South Bay Road and 8108 Thompson Road. This is for sketch plan review on the proposed Garden Center parking expansion. And Mike LaSalle is representing the applicant. Hello, Mike.
Yeah, how are you doing tonight, guys?
Great, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. Yeah, I can give a quick overview. Mr. Barone's on as well, too, so we need him. But quick overview of the lot. The site currently entrance on South Bay Road isn't changing. You can see in front of there, in front of the existing building. What the intent of this expansion is, is to help improve the separation of the, of the kind of two businesses going on, the back where the wholesale is versus the front where the retail is. And he's had some parking issues in the past in terms of having to park in the grass and, and in those busy days to, to take care of that overflow. So the intent is what you can see here. There's always, and, and what's driven this is he's purchased the neighboring property to be able to do this expansion. So on the, the front bottom, the left bottom side of this, where there's existing gravel area, was kind of his overflow parking before, and you can see that's labeled as gravel, and it's unshaded. The idea was to expand on that, but also provide a little bit more of an outdoor space and a little bit more greener area, as called out by green space game area. And then provide a connection to the back for overflow, but keep it for the retail customers still and really meet his demands that he was, what is, that he was seeing in those busy, busy days. So that's what you're seeing here with that, that additional 50 spots added. Nothing has really changed in regards to the operation of the, the business, but it does help push, and it's not shown on this plan, but I think, I believe there's an overall plan that, let's see. Yeah, it's, it's hard to see, and it's not even shown on the, the existing site demo, but there is another entrance to the north that connects to his wholesale business. And that is where he's going to push all that, the, the truck traffic to, instead of, currently, a lot of them will go through this driveway and go along that existing wood fence area against the building, along the greenhouses and towards the back of the property. So that really helps separate the two things and, and makes it a little bit greener and more retail friendly in the front. So we did, we did receive the county comments, and I hope everybody got the response letter. I was trying to keep it more streamlined with the response letter and writing back to you guys just so you could see our response to each one of the county comments. We can go through those line by line if you'd like, or if you guys have had a chance to review, we can just ask any specific questions.
My ones, I'll hear them line by line, please.
Yep. I'll go through my response. I don't have the exact, let me just pull out what county's comments here, too. So I'll go through my responses to each one. Some of them are not necessarily comments, they're just statements. So my response has only covered the comments. So the first one was, let's see. Ariel Madrid submitted the, on the existing site demo plan dated March of 2020, showed the existing site contains existing one-story South Bay. Let me, this, I lost my thought. The commercial building and greenhouse is part of the existing garden center, Barone Gardens. The owners also recently opened a hot house brewing with a bar tasting room and outdoor seating and food service in the main building. In addition, the garden center, the parking lot has been expanded since the brewery opened. And my response to that was, the parking actually has been there for quite some time. I responded back, it's been around 2004 when that, that 14 spaces that you see on the bottom left-hand side of the page, which is considered as overflow parking currently. So that, that was the response to that. And that was a, that's been there before the brewery part, portion of the, the operation opened. Next. The next comment was the Perondi County Department of Transportation, all existing proposed driveways along South Bay Road must meet department requirements. So with that, we did reach out to Ondad County DOT, and we did get a response back today. I don't know if you guys specifically saw the, the letter that went out to them as well that, to approach their comments that we did, to address their comments we, we received from them. There was, I believe there's eight comments, no, 10 comments. We addressed those comments, and I actually got it emailed today, I believe, Mark, and some of the board members were copied on that. We addressed all their comments with that response. Did everybody see that today? It came out this afternoon at some point.
I did see it.
Okay, great. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you guys did see that. So then the next one from the county planning. The Smith site plan shows proposed parking lot expansion will extend, extend, extend the existing parking area south into the portion of land that was recently cleared of overgrown vegetation. An outside table expansion area shown and replace some existing asphalt pavement area with a proposed game area. They stand outside area. This is honestly just a statement again, but adding 50 spaces, and there will be a maximum of eight employees onsite at any given time. That's a statement. Is it okay if I skip the statement once?
Yes.
Okay, good. The next advisor, advisory note from the planning was, per the Ondad County Department of Transportation, additional storm runoff and into the county's drainage system is prohibited. And we agree with that. We provided them the stormwater management memo that was developed and, and that addressed the comment from the DOT to satisfy county planning. The next advisory note was the Ondad County Department of Water Environmental Protection. And unless it can be demonstrated that anticipated sanitary flows will not exceed previous flows in excess of once during a, over prior uses, the applicant must develop a one-to-one sanitary flow offset plan. The response we had to that was, again, we're not changing, the, the business is not changing. The type of business is not changing, and the use is not changing per this parking lot expansion. And, and the, the amount of visitors as well is not changing. So that was kind of how we, how we did that. And again, the purpose of this parking was to help with his current overflow issue of parking. And the next one was, then advisory note on the wetlands. The applicant is advised to contact US Army Corps and New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to confirm the presence of federal and/or state wetlands and buffer onsite. All confirmed wetland should be shown on the plans for this site, and any necessary permit should be obtained. So back in response to that was, you know, we didn't, I didn't have the exact date. And I don't know if John can pull that out yet, but back in 95, plus or minus a year, was when that, that work was done in the back of this property, which did have some wetland permitting to do the work that you see today, which was in that back corner of the property. And you can see that, if you want one more plan, Mark, on the grading plan, I think I have the buffer area shown. Yeah, you can see that approximately 100-foot buffer on the bottom right-hand side of the page. And, no, bottom right, oh, there you go. So where I have that silt fence shown, so there's 100, it's called 100.9 on the, just barely shown on the plan. That's the buffer area from the back, the, what's left over of the wetland that was mitigated back in the 90s based on DEC permit. So the whole back of that site on the outside of his Loop Road is wetlands, and there was work done back in the 90s that got a permit. And the only little piece left is referenced by this 100-foot offset mark. And that's where we stopped our parking lot purposely, was to stay clear of that offset. So I think that addresses that comment as well. Got a drainage system is drainage. So addition, then the next comment from the county. The drainage is prohibited. The sewer buffer. Then it goes into kind of a summary, which is saying, Ondad County Department of Transportation must be contacted, and the board also must consider, municipality should be encouraged to avoid wetland and buffer areas and make sure that it's not negatively impacting the wetlands or buffer areas. And then, given approximately developed in Cicero Swamp and Mud Creek and associated flood plain, the applicant is encouraged to establish a vegetative buffer for the creek, reduce impermeable surface where possible, and utilize green infrastructure practices. And then the third comment is, the applicant is encouraged to add landscaping such as low hedge to screen front yard parking areas. So that last comment, I think we've addressed the first three, and then the last comment, we did add some specific landscaping on the front shown on the site plan. That's not shown on this plan for some reason. Go down one more, Mark. I think it must be on, yeah, there we go, on the, on the front, trying to hide that front parking lot, where we have a two-foot landscaping berm. And then on the bottom, we actually call it the type of, type of shrubs and low hedging that obviously John Barone is planning to plant based on, this is a, is a landscaping business. I think that, that's the county's response. And then the DOT is requiring us to minimize our driveway. If you look at the demo plan, we, the driveway was over 40 feet. So you can see where we're hatching out some of the driveway, so it does require some saw cutting in the corner right, I had to meet New York State DOT standards. And then it also, and on the site plan, you can see it, was required to add some striping, a stop bar, and a double yellow per DOT requirements. That was really the only comments that changed anything on the plan. We obviously gave another summary of the, each driveway, this being the southern driveway for the retail. And then the northern driveway was discussed with the DOT, which is for the wholesale, which is not shown in this plan. It's one up past that residence that's shown there. If we need to look at it, we can pull up, pull up an aerial if needed. I think that's really, that really summarizes the project and the comments to date from the planning department, and, or from county planning and Ondad County DOT. So I guess, any comments, any specific questions they can help with, I'm sure we'd be willing to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Rosito, anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Abbey?
A couple of questions. All that shaded area is earmarked for gravel?
Yeah, well, correct, yep.
And the parking spaces are supposed to be striped?
Yeah, we show, we plan on striping those, just like he does now. He does, they will require to be striped sometimes annually, is what he's found. Yeah, they do, yeah. And then what, the reason why we do, we agree with that. You can see out front where we do a proposed split rail fence, which will be his majority of his parking for that normal business. We put that split rail fence up because it really helps define the parking aisle. You can see that on the front, yeah.
That's your typical, say, four-footish split rail tape?
Yeah, similar to exactly what's there now along the building. You can see where it says wood fence.
Wood coloring or painted white or?
I don't remember. Let me look at the photos and see if I have a photo right here. It's a, it's, it's looks to be like a more of a pressure treated post, like a four-by-four or six-by-six, just natural. And John can inject in there if he'd like to.
Being pressure treated, it would, you know, have pretty good longevity then.
Yeah, yeah. But the current one is not painted or anything. It's just a natural pressure treated look.
Isn't that vaxen that's white there, it says green space area? And that's to be used for, I see a circle in one of them, but?
Well, the, the circle is just a top sill stockpile, but that green space game area is what it's specifically calling out. Its intent is to do like, you could have, you know, cornhole or types of yard games and stuff just to be laid out out there is the intent that he's having for the tasting room. Just kind of a gathering area.
Okay, so to be treated separately then. Another quick question on, you know, kind of middle-ish far right says asphalt area. What's the purpose for that next to the gravel area?
That's existing asphalt, yeah.
Well, it's already there?
Yeah, yeah, everything's already there to the right. So the only work that's happening is the shade where we actually butt up against the existing gravel area. It does transition to asphalt out behind the existing greenhouses. But that's existing already, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Snyder, welcome back.
Yes, my computer decided to freeze and then it took forever to get back. If, if this is a repeat of another question that I'll just stop, but I know our past experience has been that wherever the public is going to park and then walk to a facility, we always have that be a paved area. It eliminates or minimizes trip hazards and things of that sort. So are we talking about still all this area being gravel or are we talking about a requirement for maybe pavement, which could be in fact the porous pavement so it, the water runs through it rather than necessarily off it?
Right now, we propose is gravel to kind of match the current overflow area, which is on the, the side and, around the south side and, and that, that southwestern portion and, and south of the building was the intent. And because this is a very seasonality type business in, in terms of that. So that was the intent, but we could be, we could discuss the, the negative pros and cons of, of that.
As far as I'm concerned, that was the only concern I have. And I'm, I'm deeply concerned about the public coming, you know, and the, we've in the past, pretty much consistently made the applicant pave areas that the public would in fact be parking and walk in. And of course, it doesn't take long before a marked gravel lot is not marketed anyway. You'd almost have to market almost every week. I mean, if somebody goes out of their parking spot a little bit faster than normal, they throw their gravel and therefore eliminate the line. So I just don't see where a line gravel lot does what we need to have it do. That's my only comment.
Yeah. We, we can have John interject a little bit there because him and I obviously talked about the striping. I've seen it before. We did some fisherman access parking and stuff before where they strike the gravel. He does strike to the gravel now. You can see actually in the Google Earth image, the gravel's striped to the south, the last image that I have. And we talked a little bit about that and he might be able to interject at what his, his, how many times he does do that or how often it does require it. So we can, we can dig into that.
If I, if I can interject, this is Mark. I agree totally with Mr. Snyder that the planning board has always required parking areas to be pavement for this type of use. And I think that that consideration should be given strongly by the applicant.
Yeah, we'll talk with John and, and discuss those alternatives if, if we can look at partial areas potentially and kind of look at the main areas and then keep the overflow. You know, his, his overflow that he plans on those busy weekends where we could, where we could discuss alternatives in those areas, similar to other businesses where you have that, you know, your, your main 50 areas, 50 spaces might be paved and then you have that extra 50 that's overflow or the grass paved, stuff like that, where we do that a lot in, in some types of businesses. So maybe there's a, there's an intermediate area that we could meet the intent. In other words, pave in the entire front area to, to meet that, you know, 95% of times and then maybe leave that back not as paved to, to help A with the stormwater and then B, the cost, obviously.
Don Snyder, one more comment. Are you saying that you will never be open as a facility during the winter?
Let me ask him that right now. He, I think he is open in the winters. And just FYI, he's having trouble talking for some reason. He's texting me as we're talking.
In the winter, you will never be able to plow that lot if it's stone. I know because I did it for a church parking lot. So that just further amplifies the fact that we should in fact have this parking spots should be paved and then painted.
Right. One thing he just, he texted in to, I'm trying, I think he's trying to get back on. His intent is to use asphalt millings and they'll be rolled. So that, that eliminates some concern that you're having, I believe with me and yourself. The asphalt millings really would become a, a stripeable lot, in my opinion, a recycled asphalt, if, if it's, if it's placed correctly and, and rolled out. So I do feel like that would be a, a good alternative to do the whole thing with asphalt millings, to help satisfy that concern and for the striping as well. I feel like that's a, that's a product that would work.
This is John. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you, John.
Okay. Yeah, to expand on what Mike is saying, what we've done is we put down millings and roll them. And, and that lot, we stripe it and plowing is difficult, but between plowing and salting, we've had real good luck with it.
This is Joe Resito. Millings, I feel, would probably work in the summertime, but I've seen plowing situations where it digs it right up.
It's very difficult, but we've, we've been pretty successful with it. And it does, it does have to be repaired every spring. There's no question about that. And the plan is to re-stripe it every year. You, you can get a year out of striping with millings, but then the following year you have to, you definitely need to stripe it.
Mr. Parrish, have you got any input on this topic?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the board is, you know, going down the right path here with their, their, you know, expressing their concerns about this. You know, you're hearing the opinions of the applicant and their, you know, how they plan on addressing it. But, you know, I, I think gravel certainly is not really workable if, for a striped parking lot. Millings, you know, I guess questionable. Obviously, the asphalt would be, would be the best. And, you know, one of the comments we've had is we've, you know, recommended, or not, or not recommended, but asked, we did provide some comments that were emailed out yesterday on the project. And, you know, one of the issues we brought up was this issue. And we also asked them to provide a basis for the parking counts. I, I guess I can tell you from experience that I, I think the plan indicates there's 50 parking spaces existing. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Yeah. So I, I can tell you from experience that those spaces get pretty full underneath the current operations of the site.
Absolutely do.
And so, you know, I, I questioned whether or not this really, this area in the back is overflow or really needed parking, i- is what I'd say.
Okay.
Yeah, I too have seen that grass area become parking. They're doing a tremendous business. Congratulations on that. But I'm going to stick with my initial comment on this, in that asphalt is typically what we ask for with other applicants and we're going to be looking for that as well in this case, from my perspective.
Mark, you mentioned some comments. Did those come out to us? Maybe I missed it. Just, I was looking quick, but.
Mark Parrish?
Yeah, we're going with the mouse there. Yeah, yeah, they, they emailed those out yesterday. Mike, you should have received them.
Okay, I'm just taking a look.
Mr. Snyder, while he's looking, did you have any other questions?
No, I think it's, I, I, you know, I at first was concerned about the landscaping, but I see where they've, they've taken care of that because as a, also as a garden center, I really think that they need to make sure they've taken care of that. It looks like they have. But I'm, I'm really concerned about this parking lot and I'm not a great proponent of millings. So I guess I still stand with the fact that based on our past experience and the, the good luck that we've had with asphalt paving, that would, might be my concern that we have right now. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you. Boss?
I have no further questions. I'm all set.
Thank you. Mike, are you still looking?
Yeah, I mean, obviously I didn't look at them.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, a lot of them are minor in nature, some notes, those types of things that we would typically want on here. I, I think one of the larger ones, if, if, Mark, I don't know if you've done, are done pulling the board or have any additional comments, but?
Oh, yeah, I would, I've got a couple of comments.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll highlight some of my comments when you're, when, when you get to me.
Okay. My first one, actually, Mark, you had duplicated and that was that the outside table area expansion is in the parking lot. There's straight parking area where you're showing an expansion. So that kind of confused me.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, those parking spots are not counted. Those would be just, it would just be the paved, would be left.
So we're going to want to see those spots removed?
Yeah, we can, they're not counted in the current numbers, but we can show those as.
I, I think those are probably the existing parking, Mike. I think it's
They are, yeah.
Through here. You've got the old, the, the previous striping in there.
Yeah, and I think that's the same for some split rail fencing. So if you can just show the plan, the way it's going to be done, that would be terrific.
The pavement is staying in there. It's just the, the striping wouldn't be there anymore. The same with all the way across there where the parking actually was turned and rotated. Those, that striping is no longer obviously applicable. So, but yes, we can, we can update that.
The landscaping that you're adding to the front, I didn't see, I don't think I saw a detail of what's going to be planned. I saw what is being proposed, but not what is being, what's going to be planted where. Typically require that detail.
Yeah, so you, well, you saw that, just the notes, is that what you're referring to, right?
I saw the notes and I saw the area. Typically, the area will indicate what's being planted where.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we kind of left that free to him is what we were doing. Him and I had a conversation in terms of what he wanted to use and, and we keep him some flexibility onsite. With the comment, we can, we can actually show on the plan and call out each species if, if that's preferred.
Yes, please. And then the last question I have, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Pocopio or for you, Mike, but relative to the sanitary flows and no changes taking place now, was that addressed when the brewery was added? The flows increased when the brewery was added? That did not come in front of the planning board? That was done through codes? And I'm just wondering?
Through WAG, yeah. So, John, I don't know if there was any discussions at that time when the brewery was added. I know you did it as a, as a, as a brewery, winery, agricultural business.
Right.
Steve's not there, Scott. Yeah.
Steve Pocopio, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. So, yeah, I don't think that was taken into consideration at that time, any additional flow to the sanitary sewer. When we became aware of that, it was an additional service and product that Mr. Barone was providing as a, as a farm brewery. So, you know, we, we, we were aware of that. No, there wasn't any increase that may be caused by additional patrons. You know, obviously this has become, you know, successful in the beginning. It was just a, a bar for a tasting room for his, the, the beer that he was brewing. In addition to that, I think I would comment, similar to the other comments regarding this parking and being referred to as overflow parking. I would agree with the past that the, the existing gravel area was used for overflow for the garden center in the spring. But then the garden center was kind of closed in late spring and it wasn't necessary any longer. It was my understanding this additional parking was going to help facilitate the, the new uses added to the site and it was going to be used year-round. So I, my question would be the same, you know, is permanent parking, permanent needed parking?
Thank you for that. So relative to the sanitary flow, I'm going to leave that to the applicant, maybe Mark and Neil, if you can look into that. Is that something we need to address at the next meeting or are we good the way it is? But, you know, if you three can chat about that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark, Don Snyder, could I have a comment?
Yes.
Just wondering, is the long-term plan or the short-term plan for this facility to also be an entertainment situation where they might have bands or whatnot there? And if that is so, should we be talking about that now so it, he doesn't have to come back for a different site plan?
That currently happens now. Well, it did until we were, until all the situation right now.
Yeah, I think is currently the tasting room does have, have bands in the afternoon in the tasting room. And John, you can maybe expand on that a little bit more with that.
Yeah, there were, over the past six months, usually maybe once a week, there would be, there would be a band sometimes.
So does, does this put this whole project in a little different category since it's also entertainment?
Well, that's pretty common in tasting rooms. And if you look at the farm brewery rules, I guess, or conditions, that is something that's permitted.
I'll leave that up to Steve. You got it, Steve.
Or Neil.
Well, now you're talking about the actual use of the property and approving certain uses on the property. You're going beyond the scope of, you know, what, what this initially started at, but it's certainly a legitimate area, area of concern because what you're being asked about is reason for it and the basis for the increase in parking, which leads you into the questions that you're asking, is what are you actually doing at the site? And I don't see any information on that yet. So in other words, if the, if the question is what's the basis, what's the basis of the parking? What's the basis of, of the, the changes that you're making? The basis of what's actually going on at the site? And I don't know, you know, I'll leave that to Steve to say what is actually going on out there and if it's, is anything new or different that they're proposing?
Right. And, and the short answer is no new activities or changes to the activities of people or use of what it's been. And I don't know how long that's been. And John can interject there, of the, the operation of the farm brewery and tasting room. It's, it's a, its use has not changed.
But that's been a
Had no input to the, you know, when the brewery was set up. So, and that might be because of law, but we had, we had no input into the change in Mr. Barone's additional facilities.
The farm brewery started a year ago and that was an expansion of the garden center, which, and the farm, the farm brewery, we are producing beer there. And that's, that's the, the main part of it. And then the tasting room is, is an extension of the farm brewery.
This is Steve. Dan, so, but the, the tasting room or the bar was, if I remember correctly, was what, last summer or this, just this past spring?
Yeah, April 4th is when that started. Yeah, April 4th is when that started.
So, Steve, when that was authorized, did you understand that those were going to be entertainment, that kind of thing?
No, I don't, I don't think I did, I believe that that was the case, it was simply putting in the tasting room. I know he was remodeling, or, you know, a bathroom as well. So, you know, and I understand for, what I'm hearing, there's some food service, I don't know if it's, you know, hand food, finger food type things that also, that's going on, so certainly, you know, if the board wanted to take those into consideration, you know, it's understandable.
I think the key is everything that he has there is under the guidelines of the farm brewery, that I think where John's going. And I think he's been very coherent to those, to make sure that he was following out of that guidelines. And that's that gray area for the planning board versus the farm brewery and the ag, and I've seen that in a couple of situations with wineries and stuff like that. So, I don't have a great answer, but I think that's where John's path was led, was based on those regulations.
You know, I think Mr. Snyder's point is well-taken, and really, I think all we're looking for, he's looking for, and I would agree, is that, you know, you put comments on the plan that will include the operations that are going to be taking place, let's get it all decided on the table.
Yeah, if I may, I think that's a comment well-taken, I think what you're looking for is to put something down on the plans, so we know this isn't going to morph into something completely different than what's there right now.
Right, I agree, what about, if you zoom in on, yeah, go ahead. If you zoom in on the bottom of this page, Mark, CO2, so we tried to make sure the current usage and capacities were listed here. And I think this is a good thing to see, that this is something that we can hold them to, right? So this is your bistro, your tasting room in the farm market, and then the additional seating that we talk about, the 40 seats, is where this is referencing, where he has the outside space and some of the inside space there, that supports the tasting room, and so on. So, we have that, we can further expand on that, but that's what the intent was, to really see what, to explain all the uses inside this building. And then also, you know, kind of guide as to a parking number for you guys to be able to review, and that's where this is coming from.
Yeah, Mike, I think that's correct, I think the expansion of that is what we're saying, you know, to include the entertainment, what the entertainment is, how often, and I would probably include the activities that will take place in the green space area as well. Just something that's delineated in writing on the plan.
Yeah, Don Snyder here, that's, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm just thinking out loud, if, I'm not a drinker, but if my wife and I wanted to go out, and we can certainly drink soda pop and listen to the band, that would become a venue that we might in fact go to. So if it's included in the drawings or on the application and on the site plan, then there would not be able to be somebody else coming back and saying, well, that's, that wasn't in the approval state, so if we can get all those kinds, that's why we've even had people put on their site plan, things that they were going to do as the next step, so they would save some of the bureaucracy in order to get their project accomplished. So that's all I'm going for.
Yep, understood, we can add a statement of use right on the plan here, just to kind of further develop the, you know, obviously there's nothing I, he just wants to bullet everything that's going on to expand on the seating capacity, and do that, we can add that.
Yeah, you know, they're doing a wonderful job, they've been busy, so it's exciting to see that, we just want to make sure everything, all our cues are crossed and eyes are dotted.
Yeah, one of the things, I guess, we did ask that a statement of use, operating hours, and that type of thing, come into play or be provided. One of the other things at the site plan, and I did not note this, and I don't know if one's been provided, but one of the things the site plan guidelines require is a floor plan. So, I guess if that hasn't been provided, Mike, maybe add that to the list of items that's been, been, already been provided to you. If we don't have that, again, so I guess we can again see the layout of the building, where the various uses are, and that type of thing.
Yeah, I can actually be able to do that right on here, because it's only, everything that we're talking about is happening on that front portion and on that kickback, where the wood fence is, so probably easier to add it right on the site plan.
Oh, and Mark Marzullo, I guess, can I touch on, I guess, one of the comments that I had?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so one of the things we noted, so this is the county's GIS. And the parcel, the site actually contains three parcels, and these property lines are off a little bit, that's just the way they, the GIS works, but you can see there's really three parcels we're talking about, and there's a lot more going on than just the, the, the use of the, you know, of the garden. I mean, there's, there's greenhouses and all those types of things, there's a house here, which I think Steve said they may either live in or rent out, I don't know which that is. But one of the things we've suggested is, and so, when we give the use, the statement of use, you need to indicate all the uses that are happening on the site. And another one of the things we've suggested is that, since this additional property has been purchased, and there's multiple parcels, if they go through a subdivision, go through a subdivision to, you know, consolidate these parcels into either a single parcel or a layout that makes sense for the various uses that are on the site. So I, hopefully you can see what I'm talking about here, we've got one parcel here, a second parcel here, and then the third parcel, which is actually fairly large and goes all the way down to here, is, you know, is where this additional parking is being constructed. So, again, our recommendation is that they do a subdivision to make this site more orderly, and you don't have buildings that are crossing property lines with zero lot line setbacks, and you have your parking on the parcels that, you know, that you're using the other uses for.
Yeah, that front parcel, we talked about that a little bit on that front, that weird square parcel, and John, I don't know if you have any, but I know, I don't know if you knew exactly where that was, and I don't think it's completely right on here, even as shown.
Well, I mean, you're showing a property line here, which seems to be that parcel.
Yes.
Another property line here, what we don't have also included, and again, we've asked, suggested you provide, is an overall plan showing the entire site and all of the parcels and everything that's on those parcels. I mean, it looks like, this, I'm assuming this base map is probably from Iinusi and Romans, it looks like they're, they're tax...
Yeah.
So, I'm guessing you've got an overall plan of the site that you could provide. So again, the board has a full understanding of everything that's going on on the site, it's not just this, the farm market and the, you know, the farm brewery.
Right, yeah, and I can, I can, we can do an overall site plan and show that, because the DOT kind of got into that, and our response to the DOT is showing the two different uses, which is really the wholesale side and the retail farm brewery and tasting greenhouse side. So, we can get that on the plan, so it's defined, and then also given, add an overall site plan. And I think it's important to see that northern driveway that we referenced.
Yeah, so I think, you know, that's my comments, and again, it's up to the board to, you know, decide how they'd like to address those.
If you could, Mark, can you reforward those to me, I can't seem to find them in my either inbox there, but I don't know why.
Do I have, is that the right email address?
Yeah, I've gotten emails from you, oh, there we go, like that was on the, that is correct, yeah, that was 422 at 113.
Yeah, I'll reforward it to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. 113, nothing.
I'd like to hear one more comment, as where if you're going to talk about the property line stuff, don't you want to be careful with how you set those as it relates to setbacks and things like that? So, in one respect, it may be easier to make it one big property or two pieces of property, rather than, you know, I think you've got to be careful so you don't end up with a setback problem with your property lines.
Yeah, I mean, anything they do relative to a subdivision would need to meet the subdivision requirements. Again, I agree, the simplest thing seems to be to combine these three parcels into a single parcel. That can be done through the simple subdivision process with the town, which is pretty simple. Even if you, even if they decide to make it multiple parcels, as long as you don't exceed the existing three, you can still do that through a simple subdivision process, which again, doesn't even need to be approved by the planning board, that can be done administratively. Steve, am I correct in that?
Yes, Mark, you're correct, and I did mention this a little bit to John Barone, when I talked to him last about, this might be a subject that comes up with these parcels, but, you know, bifurcating existing buildings and so on.
Go ahead, Chuck. Chuck, your mic's not on.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Start over.
Are all three, these three parcels zoned ag?
Yes, they're all zoned agricultural.
Okay, based on that, unfortunately, when you come to a commercial business on ag, there's guidelines on signage.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, say that again?
If it's all ag, and you got a commercial business, there's guidelines on what you can do for signage.
I don't know, I mean, I've heard that said in the past, I mean, you have site plan uses in an ag district, and I don't know any in the sign ordinances that prohibits signage in an ag district.
Okay, and referring back to the dog grooming, same situation.
Correct.
There also was a couple of pole barns built out on Route 31 near Lake Shore, that at least one of the buildings had signage, and a number of years ago, they were made to take it down, because they were ag.
I know that was an issue with J and R, just down the road here in Thompson, same idea.
It might have been a desire condition of the planning board, you know, for their site plan approval. But I don't know that it is a...
If we can look into that for the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Right, just so I clarify all that.
A good point. Mark Parrish, did you have anything else, or were you all set?
No, I think you guys, again, I've just reforwarded, like, those comments, there's some other minor things, but again, I don't think they need discussion right now. I think the board has touched on the major issues that I may have included in my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Marizio, have you got anything additional?
No, I think I'm good, I mean, just to go back to the parking earlier, I can understand maybe the need to have paving up towards the front where the primary parking is, but I don't know if there would ever be as many people to have the entirety in the back paved, and possibly be gravel. To go off a truck's point, Barone's has been there for years, and they've had a sign, so, I mean, this plan has nothing to do with changing the layout of the facility, so how would that come into play?
All right, I think I'll ask Neil, Steve, and Mark to look into that topic, and advise us for the next meeting.
If I could make a comment, the LED sign that we put in...
Is this John?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, John.
The LED sign that we put in maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we went through the town and got approval to put that in, because we took a sign that was out of code, that was too close to the road, and updated it to this sign and brought this up to code at the time. So that was done, it's got to be, it's got to be a good 10 years ago.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, anything additional?
No, thank you.
Mr. Jermaine?
All set, thank you.
Mr. Pocopio, anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, that concludes that agenda item. Includes all of our agenda items.
Well, we have a discussion point.
Yes, so, discussion point is next, I will ask for board members if there's anything they would like to discuss, Mr. Rosito?
Uh, no, not at this time, I think I'm all set, I just, I'm hoping that the neighbors and whatnot can get their opinion and feedback to us in a timely manner, and hoping that we can do this next board meeting in person, so it'll make it easier for everyone. I'm sure they're anxious to get their comments to us, and I'm sure they would much rather have them face-to-face, as I would.
Thank you, John. Mr. Abbey?
I'm all set, I'd like to thank John for all the planning way ahead here, and, you know, running a great business. Like to see everything, the campus, as easy as, quick as possible.
Thank you, John. Mr. Snyder?
All set for now.
Mr. Blass?
No further questions, thank you.
I'm all set for now, Mr. Marizio, anything additional?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking through, and Steve, I mean, you can look also, but I'm not seeing anything in the sign code that prohibits signs in an agricultural district.
No, I agree, Mark, that's correct, I mean, I've never seen that, and I can certainly look again, but I've never come across that before.
Yeah, I mean, I just, just a very quick review of it, I'm not seeing anything here that says that they're prohibited.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Steve, anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Neil, for yours?
Okay, I, we had a legal matter that's been pending, that I have discussed with each board member individually, as we are not able to have our traditional executive session. So I'm going to read a statement, and then I'm going to make a motion for the board. Following motion is presented in regard to a certain litigation matter known as Trade J LLC, now known as Trade J Lasso LLC, and Donald Leftstraddle as trustee of the Stroll Family Trust, petitioners and the Town of Cicero Planning Board, Mark Marzullo individually and in his official capacity as chairman and member of the Town of Cicero Planning Board, respondent's index number 004959/2019. I know for the record that each individual member of the planning board has been presented a copy of the proposed settlement agreement, mutual release stipulation and order, and has had an opportunity to consult with counsel regarding the proposed settlement. Now, we're going to move for the adoption of a resolution approving the settlement agreement, mutual release and stipulated order as presented herein, and authorizing the planning board chairman to execute the same on behalf of the Town of Cicero Planning Board.
Do we have somebody who would like to make that motion?
I'll second it.
You're making the motion, Dan?
Yes, I would second it.
So you're going to first it?
Oh, I'll first it, I'll be first.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosito? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do a roll call, Mr. Rosito?
Yes.
Mr. Abbey?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Blass?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries unanimously. Is that it, Neil?
That's it.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move, let's go.
Motion to adjourn was by Mr. Abbey, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosito, meeting is adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm going home.
Me too.
Good night.
Good night.
Careful.